Time is now seven o'clock and I'll call this meeting to order. Mr. Gibbs, will you please read the statement of compliance?
In compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, public law in nineteen seventy-five, chapter two thirty-one, notice of this meeting has been properly advertised in the Daily Record in Suburban Trends. Its agenda has been posted at the appropriate locations and a copy has been filed with the Aquanic Township clerk.
Thank you, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Here.
Mr. Cerisi?
Here.
Mrs. Esposito?
Here.
Mr. Gitten?
Here.
Ms. Ikeo?
Here.
Mr. McSweeney?
Here.
Mr. Pompeo is not here right now. Mr. Senick?
Here.
And Mrs. Chanton is absent. Do you have a call?
Thank you, everyone, please stand for the flag salute. All right, good evening, everyone, welcome to our May twelfth workshop meeting. Last week was Teachers Appreciation Week and the board would like to express our gratitude and thanks to our outstanding teachers and staff. Also, as testing continues, we want to remind our students to continue to try your best. And last, the Board Negotiations Committee will meet with the PTA again on five nineteen, which I think is next Monday, for our fifth meeting. And that's it for me, pass it over to Dr. Portis.
That was quick, I wasn't ready. Since I'm not ready, I'm going to send it right over to the Zeglers for the student report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's really hard to believe how quickly the school year is drawing to a close. PTHS students and staff continue to work hard to finish the school year strong. Last week, the district celebrated Teachers Appreciation Week. There was a variety of activities throughout the week to recognize teachers. At PTHS, teachers were treated to a variety of food themes each day from breakfast by Pomtonian to snack carts and ice cream truck and a popcorn machine. Thank you to all the HSA for their support of the teachers as well. AP testing is halfway completed. Students are working incredibly hard and are looking forward to hearing about successful results in July. Congratulations to the cast and crew of Mean Girls who put on three great shows. The summer play trials will be happening next week. The show is Bonnie and Clyde. Spring sports teams are getting ready for the state tournament over the next several weeks. Congratulations to Derek Cepio, who took second overall in the Boys Golf Group One Sectional Tournament with a score of seventy-two. Derek played today in the group of, in the Tournament of Champions. Congratulations to Caitlin Zegler on recording a hundred career points in lacrosse. And congratulations to Henny Strubel, who won the Discus Competition at the NJAC Tournament last week. This was Henry's third individual title in this event. Emily will finish the rest. Fall sport, fall sport interest meetings will be held on May twentieth during unit lunch. Registration for fall sports open up that same day. On May, on May first, PTHS recognized the members of Class of Twenty Twenty-Five who made, who made their college decisions. It was a proud moment for the seniors. We wish them the best of luck in their future endeavors. The seniors are gearing up for prom, which will be, which is going to be held at the Grove, in Cedar Grove, on May twenty-ninth. PTHS is proud to announce the Val Victorian and the Salutatorian of the Class of Twenty Twenty-Five. Ivana Van Ringdon is the Class Val Victorian and Kate Dunham is the Class Salutatorian. They will be recognized at a future board meeting. Student council elections have begun for next year. Students are campaigning this week and elections will be happening next week. Thank you for your time and have a great night.
And before we continue, at the last meeting, we had mentioned that Emily had one hundred career points in lacrosse and Caitlin, you had one hundred draw controls. So I know that you congratulated your sister and I think that you congratulated her back, but the board would like to congratulate you both and give you a round of applause.
And tell them what the lacrosse record is this year.
Our record right currently is eight and two and we're looking to win the conference. We're two wins away from sealing the conference.
And, and when's the last time that happened?
Twenty eighteen.
So you're saying that's good?
I'm saying I was surprised they even remembered the last time it happened.
Oh, keep it up, we're really proud of you. And well done with the presentation too, with the report. All right, I have a few, few updates of my own to provide. First off, to echo what was said, I hope everybody enjoyed Teacher Appreciation Week and also that all the mothers had a wonderful Mother's Day yesterday. As somebody who's married to a teacher and a mother, I'm glad I remembered to mention both, so that was good for me. Just a few updates from what I've been working on. In terms of shared services, I'm happy to report that our partnership with Pompton Lakes, Booton, Montville, Lincoln Park should produce some revenue for the district in the upcoming school year. Granted, we're aware that things could change, but right now it looks like by combining one of our routes for special education at district placement, could expect to bring in revenue between thirty-five and fifty-five thousand dollars. That's pretty exciting. I know Mr. Gibbs is working with our transportation coordinator and trying to find an even bigger savings in terms of more efficient routes for the academy placements. On the thirtieth, Mr. Senick and I attended the Morris County Council of Education Association's Friend of Education Event. It was a really nice night and we enjoyed seeing staff members from Aquanic playing an important role in a ceremony that brought in a wide range of political figures and also celebrated people who've made great contributions to education throughout our county. For kindergarten enrollment and placement, there should have been something in the elementary school newsletters on Friday and we're sending something out to kindergarten, enrolling kindergarten parents tomorrow, just reminding them that if you know of anybody who has not yet signed up for kindergarten, please do so with a great degree of urgency as we want to make sure we can follow the attendance plan. If people sign up after we've already announced placement, you're just going to get shuttled to whichever school has the third kindergarten. So it's really, really important to get that done. And we do have our orientation taking place on June fifth and that will be same date for all of the schools, assuming that's a, if that's a Thursday, it is a Thursday, it's a Thursday in June, I should make sure you get the date right, it is June fifth. The AI team had, AI team had its final meeting of the school year last week. Mr. Shea presented a summary of what the group accomplished. Our next steps are to complete the AI plan, which will inform the policy that we're looking to have in place for the start of the school year. And I'll speak a little bit more about that during the policy period. On May seventh, the Morris County School Board Association held its meeting, which four of us attended virtually, given the sinkhole situation, it was a very good idea. But our Sam Cerisi was recognized for his ten years as a board member and he was also recognized for having achieved Master Board Member Certification. Congratulations, Sam, we always knew you were certifiable. Thank you. And then our unsung hero, Sean Moore, was also recognized with a one thousand dollar scholarship from All American Mechanical and the Rotary Club of the Skylands. And then finally, a couple other things coming up, NJSA Conference, that's the Superintendent Association, that's taking place in Atlantic City, starting on Wednesday and going all the way through Friday. I'm excited to attend, though I'm not really a huge fan of Atlantic City, looking to get additional insight into how districts are managing AI, whether through policy, implementation, however else, as well as how, how some of our friends throughout the state are managing staffing and more perhaps most importantly, addressing student, measurable student learning growth. And then to echo something that the girls said and that Mr. Senick said as well, we are continuing with AP testing and I'm really happy to hear that our students are putting forth a great effort on it. We still have some more NJSLA testing as well, not only at the middle school, but also with the science tests coming up. And as far as the science assessment, I will say, if somebody tells you that the test doesn't matter, ask them if you have to put your name on it. And if, and you do, if you're putting your name on it, then it definitely matters. It also matters for the district's overall performance report, but most importantly, I hope that our students show the same pride in their work that they've been showing through AP testing, as well as the ELA and math testing. And looking forward to some great outcomes. And that concludes my report.
All right, just to piggyback on that, we said it at the last meeting, but Dr. Portis also received the certification of the new board member certification, so congratulations to you as well.
Thank you, I got recognized for doing what I was supposed to do, thank you.
Mr. Gibbs, you have a report?
Yes. Good evening. On May sixth, the school district received an open request for staff information. The request was honored in accordance with state regulations on May twelve. On May ninth, Mr. Senick, Dr. Portis and I visited an office that will be coming up for sale on Newark-Pompton Turpike. It was a dentist's office that is currently abandoned and is in need of a lot of work. It will further, it will be further discussed at the discussion portion of the FFA section on tonight's board agenda. On May twelfth, I had a meeting with Eric Corman, a representative of Pomtonian, to discuss the new lunch prices for the next school year. The new lunch prices reflect a meal increase of three point six percent for the high school and middle school and three point two percent for the elementary schools. The meal prices will be provided to the board for approval prior to the May twenty-seventh board meeting. The school district has an opportunity to access an SDA grant in the amount of a hundred and one thousand dollars for either emergent capital projects or maintenance projects. More information will be provided at the FFA discussion portion of the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gibbs. That brings us to our first opportunity for public comment. I'll open the floor to any member of the public that would like to speak on any agenda item.
No.
And being that there is no one here, I'm going to close this section and move on to approval of our action items. And up first is PMC. And since Ms. Shannon is not here, I'm going to ask Mr. Cerisi to please move PMC.
Yes, I'd like to move PMC two eleven dash twenty-five through PMC two twenty-six dash twenty-five.
Second.
Any question or discussion? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Ikeo?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo is not here, Mrs. Chanton is absent and Ms. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Senick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, and with that, Ms. Barbosa, you're officially in the district, so welcome to the district. And if you'd like to say anything, go right ahead.
Thank you so much for this opportunity, board members, Dr. Portis, Ms. Van Sickle, anyone else. I was about to say TV land, but it's not TV, we're livestream land over there. My name is Jeanne Barbosa, I am so grateful and thankful for this opportunity to join your very dedicated and loving community. I felt from, and I had said this to you, I felt from the very, very first round, I said, here's a group of people that love what they do, admins and teachers who care about their students and they prioritize people first. There's a lot of work to do in education. We, we have a lot to do, no matter what district you are from, but to be able to say we value, we value people, we value those who want to be leaders and we want to listen to everyone who's part of this educational web, that is a beautiful thing. I come to you very excited with twenty-two years plus in education. I started out as a high school math teacher, I'm very much math nerd, but besides that, I, I, I enjoyed being the head coach of the girls volleyball program, an assistant director, vocal and acting coach, chaperone advisor, I was even duct taped to a wall for fundraiser. I, I say yes to everything, I got to go all in. And as an administrator, I mean, I left the classroom kicking and screaming because I wasn't expecting it, but to be called into leadership was definitely a gift. And I was a K, I have been a K-12 math, science, STEM, business, computer science, et cetera, supervisor, small district. And I have, I have to say that besides any title or job I possibly could have, being a mentor and a guide and a resource and a cheerleader is what I've appreciated the most. And that goes for the staff and the students. And I continue helping inspire other people by being an adjunct professor in the Educational Leadership Program at Monmouth State, teaching them about the CIA, Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. So taking a step, July first, into this position, science and STEM, is very exciting because I believe that this is the subject area that could be the vehicle for every other subject, but it's something that students can throw themselves into. They could be creative, innovative, they could thrive. And in all, you know, in all the rounds, I spoke about my two daughters, I have two elementary daughters, they love making slime as much as everyone else. But the thing that my oldest said to me is, well mommy, I love science the best because anything can happen, anything's possible. And so that's the type of feeling I want to help inspire and get into those classrooms, K to twelve. We need to ignite curiosity again because somewhere along the way, we lose our ability or interest in just looking up at the sky and wondering what's out there. And so to start with a foundation, elementary, keep them going, get them, get hands-on design challenges so that they have this motivation and momentum so by the time they get to high school, we're populating those academy programs with some really strong and motivated students. So I thank you for this opportunity, I look forward to doing as much as possible with your amazing team and community, thank you.
All right, thank you and welcome. All right, up next is CIS and I'm going to ask Ms. Esposito to please move the item under CIS.
I'd like to move CIS eighty-four dash twenty-five.
Second.
Any question or discussion? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Ms. Ikeo?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo is absent, Ms. Chanton is absent, Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Senick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you, up next is FFA. Mr. Blumer, would you please move FFA?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to move FFA one sixty-five dash twenty-five and FFA one sixty-six dash twenty-five.
Second.
Any question or discussion? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Ms. Ikeo?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo is absent, Ms. Chanton is absent, Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Senick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, that brings us into our workshop and first up is PMC with two items to discuss, staffing update and then the communication goals for the district for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
All right, thank you. Shot down, one quick note. It's pulling the momentum. All right, first item is staffing. You may have heard that we have hired a new science supervisor.
We did?
Yes.
Okay.
And she brings great energy, so we're, we're really excited, so, so welcome to our team, welcome to our community, Zorosa. And another exciting thing we, that we have, which will likely appear on the second agenda in May, is that through a shared service agreement with North Halden, we still have to iron out some of the details. Ms. Morjese will be helping us with that, but we, we are hiring a network administrator and we will be splitting it with our friends in North Halden. Looks like we're going to save a little over twelve grand for this year and then anticipating savings of twenty-four thousand for next year over what we're currently paying for the outsourced or the agency services. So I think it's going to give us more hands-on support and we're really excited about it and it's a familiar face, so you can look to, if we don't have that on the agenda for May twenty-seventh, it'll only be because we're working out logistics. We have a point five elementary special ed teacher and I had made a note that that's going to be a tough one to fill. I just got a transmittal report for it today, so I'm interviewing that person next week and we'll look to have her on the agenda for the twenty-seventh. And then we've posted for a special ed math position. That was going to prove challenging to fill because you need somebody who has both the math certificate as well as the special ed cert. This way they're considered highly qualified and they can teach in a resource replacement situation. So that one, I'm anticipating is going to be a little more challenging to fill, but you just need that one, you need one candidate, it's all, one good candidate, it's all you really need. And again, I made the comment about Ms. Barbosa, but it really was an outstanding pool for the science supervisor position. I give Mrs. Vance Cole a lot of credit, she followed the process very precisely, things were very well laid out, they were organized, communication was precise and judging from somebody who was there on the inside, it sounds like our team really presented very well, which is what you want. I look at that as a, as a two-way recruiting opportunity, not only for the candidate, but also for the district representative, so I'm thrilled that that's working so well. So that, that really summarizes staffing. As you know, we have a couple resignations, we've already posted for those. And something I'll put out there that we've been doing with our postings as well is for a lot of positions, we're making it known what the salary range is. And we're seeing a larger candidate pool right now, so it's becoming a little bit more of, a little more difficult to select candidates because you have so many good ones coming in, but just as, which is a good problem to have. We have an elementary school teacher position and we've already received over a hundred applicants, I think it's actually up to one twenty now. Yeah, so things are starting to, things are starting to pick up in the market. So we're, we'll look to have, obviously, everything fully staffed in time for the September second opening with staff, September fourth with kids, but we're enthusiastic about the pool we're seeing. I don't know if you guys have any questions about staffing or processes? Cool. The second item that's there, it's a, it's a three-pronged one and it has to do with district communications. First one is the crisis communications plan and this one was actually born out of, I was at a school board's training and it was nice, I had my oldest son there with me, who's also a board member in Lincoln Park. And as things would come up, he would look at me, I'd say, yeah, we have that. And when they had the crisis communication plan, I definitely tried to avoid eye contact with them because I had to just sheepishly say, yeah, we don't have that one yet. So I did a, I did a search of what other districts in New Jersey have for crisis communication plans and there's not an awful lot out there. So I initiated a meeting, this is about two months back, with Mr. Reiner, who's a school safety specialist, Ron Lucas, Matt Shea and Karen Aug, who works in the board office with me. And we got to work and what I thought was going to be kind of a fairly easy four or five-page document, it's probably going to be much more voluminous than that. Ron Lucas has something that outlines contingency plans for all possible things. We get a tornado, what happens, what gets triggered, who gets called, who are the, who are the agents with whom we communicate? And we want it focused on positions as opposed to people, because people change, positions stay intact. So they're, they're working so much deeper into the weeds than I anticipated and I'm really excited about it. I think I made a reference to this last month and I said that this will most likely show up as a board goal for, not board goal, sorry, a district goal for next year. I think it's just that important and what we're going to look to have is an internal, very thick report for the crisis communications plan, that something happens, principals, supervisors, directors have access to them, they know exactly what to follow. And a more simplified version that we can share out with the public, so I think it is important for the public to see, okay, so that these guys know that this is how they push things out. Sometimes you have, sometimes you have to push out to the media, you have to use social media, whatever the resources might be, but we want to make sure that what we have is, is top shelf and it's something that when we share with you guys to review, it reflects a lot of, a lot of work.
So thinking about the, the crisis communication plan, we do have, I mean, I don't know if we share them with the public, we probably don't because of the sensitive nature of the information, but we do have contingency plans of where people go from each school and how that's communicated, so I, I, I wouldn't say we have nothing, we just don't have something in this form.
Correct, yeah, and I should articulate that because I realized out of context, what I said about three minutes ago probably sounded awful. We, we have, we have a lot of plans in place and what I want to do is narrow it. So there's something called the COOP, which is a major contingency plan, that, that's about a hundred pages, we have that one ready to go. It's just, it's not the most user-friendly document. I want something where it's almost like it has tabs where you can quick jump to something. We, we have evacuation plans for each building, we have safe haven evacuations, we have, there's another one where you, when you go a far distance, but don't actually enter another building, it's not safe haven, but it's similar to an offset evacuation. So yes, we, we have myriad plans that are in place. I want it streamlined into something that if something happens, the last thing I want you to have to do is look. I want, I want you to be right there and you can access it and act quickly. We're also going to work on having statements ready to go too. So if we have to go into a shelter in place because there's a bear outside, which could happen, I want the statement that's going to go out to families ready to go, so you're not sitting there trying to type it, it's already done. So, yeah.
And those, yeah, and for crisis communications, it may be one incident, but you may have seven different communications prepared to go, because you're, something you give to your principals, you may not be giving to staff or you may not be giving out to the public or to media or to the police or fire department. So you may have seven different cookie cutter statements ready to go and then you just fire them out and it's, that's why you, you say, oh, this, this will be simple and then all of a sudden, wait a second, this is one incident, but now there's seven different messages I have to send and have them ready to go within like five minutes.
And you hit the nail right on the head, yeah, and it was, it was a good moment of humility for me to realize, especially listening to Ron and Matt Reiner talking, and they're really, they get really into it, but just to your point, to the depth of it, yeah, and what I send to the board is going to be different from what I would send out to perhaps the greater public, which is different from what I would send to a media member, which internally we might have something different altogether, so, yeah. It's going to require a lot of preparation, a lot of work, but I think it's going to be really good work. And you prepare these things too, hoping that you never have to implement them. And I bring up the tornadoes, one of the, it was an interesting moment from one of my, it was for my first year, but when there was a threat of a tornado coming through Aquanic and we didn't have a tornado plan, so I was quick looking on websites from schools in Kansas, trying to see what they recommended. Get it, get in the hallways, get away from windows. I mean, essentially classrooms are bunkers, they're, they're all cinder blocks, so. Yeah, earthquake, yeah, yep, yep. So, yeah, we, there, there is one thing in the, in the kind of generic overview that we have too, there is something for volcanoes, we determined that we could dismiss that one, we, we think we're okay there. It's true, I said that about earthquakes. And then the, the next two are more for review purposes, but the, the second, the second item there is the website slash app. And Matt Shea and I have been talking about evaluating our current format and usage for not only our website, but also our app. So I think what we did when we went to Final Site a couple of years back was, was, I think it was a very good move and I felt like, I feel like our website is laid out better. What I don't love is if we want to make changes because this, the static part of our website takes up too much space, to condense that would require an enormous upcharge from Final Site, which I'm not a fan of. So we've looked at another vendor that we could work with, who, whose approach is that you, you get one major overhaul per year for free and then you get a series of smaller changes that they kind of look at as the big ball of whatever, they don't, they don't try to nickel and dime you. So we are, we are looking at another possible vendor, they did actually send us a quote, which was pretty, was, was more than competitive. But we want to get input not only from the board, but also from our staff, potentially the community, before we do move on to something else. But the app, that was, I think that was a victory and we're, we definitely want to continue with that, so that, that would be embedded. Oh, and something we like about some of the competitors too is that I, I use a platform called School Messenger to send out my newsletters. If we, if we were to go to one of the competitors, it's actually integrated into the system, so I would push it out, it'd be articulated right into the website and it's, to me, it creates inefficiency. So these are things we're looking into. And you guys will, you guys will definitely hear about this, especially if everybody's in on PMC. And then finally, for social media, I just put that in there as something that we're open to input from the community, from the board, from the staff, from the kids about our social media reach. I, I'm pretty open about it, I, I still find Instagram kind of weird and scary, so I don't go on it very much. But what, how, how can we best reach different segments of our school community? I feel like Facebook is really great for parents, I know- Um, I know Mrs. Aug and Mr. Shea have worked very hard on creating content that we can push out there. I know it pushes out automatically to Instagram in many cases. Um, we also use Twitter, which hasn't really um, maintained the traction it once had, but if there are other means that we can employ, I'm interested because we, I feel like we have a lot of great messages to share. Let's make sure we're getting them out to the maximum reach.
Yeah, most of it I think is that, like, how much are people on social media? And then there's so many updates that come through their phone that they might not get ours.
Yeah.
Because they get something else, you know? But uh, I, I, I think the ones that you just mentioned, I think are the ones that you would want to have.
Mm-hmm. They're getting a little loud outside. I think we're okay.
Yeah, probably TikTok would be your best.
All right, anything else with uh, PMC?
I, I, I did overhear TikTok. We're gonna, we're gonna decline that one. Um, but but yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll see if there are other um, possibilities. We'll check them out.
All right, moving on to CIS, uh, we have two items, a curriculum committee meeting update and then the NJ uh, graduation proficiency assessment results.
Sorry, I'll go over the um, CIS notes from our curriculum meeting. We had a curriculum meeting on the fifth. Um, it was myself, Mr. McSweeney, Sam Sarisi and uh, Mr. Senek, as well as Mrs. Vansical. It was a really productive meeting. Um, as was the last one. Um, we discussed the E, ELA presentation that was held. Um, and you know, how amazing it was and how informative it was and how it helped the board get a good idea of some of the upgrades and, and happenings within the ELA um, department. Um, we also discussed integrity. Uh, possibly purchasing it to fill in some of the gaps in phonemic awareness for our students as well as purchasing some materials for um, the elementary students in terms of phonics needs specifically. Um, filling the gaps in foundations as well as over the summer, working on building scope and sequence um, to fill in some of those gaps in foundations in terms of the curriculum, which gathering all from that, from the DIBELS assessment, right? Really using that data. Um, discuss novels again. Um, already in the works, developing a list of the novels that are in use. Um, discussing current usage and gaps, discussing um, ways we can implement more informational text work. Um, specifically in social studies and science, as well as working on some of um, writing becoming even more of a priority to work on those skills. Did I miss anything for ELA? No? All good? Okay. I got it all right. So math, um, so we discussed the standards, uh, updating the curriculum over the next couple of months in terms of the twenty twenty-three standards. Uh, math supervisor will present to the B, uh, to the board on the twenty-seventh in regard to conquer math and all that was um, learned throughout the conquer math series. Um, and what they've brought back for that, from that. Um, continuing to review resources for math intervention. Really ways to target those deficits. Um, a lot of great um, so piloted, this year, the district piloted uh, Ready Math for Algebra One, which was a new program through iReady. Um, so we're going to bring that in hopefully next year. Are we debating it?
Um, we're discussing it.
Discussing it. I'm sorry, discussing possibly bringing that in. Um, so that was great. Um, science. Um, hired uh, Mrs. Barbosa. Congratulations. Excited to have you. Um, moving forward or grading against discuss, discussing greeting. Um, Mr. Kopp has been modeling labs in the fifth grade classroom. Social studies will be implementing the TCI program for grades one through five next year. Um, talking about community walking tours. Summer curriculum will be updated for grades one through five. Um, middle school, high school, um, implementing or aligning the ELA standards. Um, at the PD December, February, PD in December and February. Health updates with, the health curriculum updates with town health department providing some materials um, and collaborating with us in terms of some vaping and fentanyl education, which is absolutely needed. Uh, discussed dual enrollment, submitted additional courses to William Patterson for computer information and technology. Cybersecurity, data science, marketing one and two was approved. Um, accounting, there's no course available. Allied Health students will, full-time Allied Health stu- students, seniors, instead of taking um, anatomy and physiology two, will be taking AP bio. Um, discussed uh, PV advanced placement rubrics and recommendations. So if students going into honors class, we did discuss the importance of communicating that with parents. Um, with the, with the teachers communicating that with parents as well. So there's no surprises. Uh, again, discussed grading scale and expectations. Um, there was clarification that we have budgeted for twenty out of district students. We only have seventeen in private out of district programs. Um, but there are three more conservatively budgeting for those just in case. Um, and I think that was it.
I'll just mention on the, um, I found out today on the vaping slash fentanyl education. Um, we do at the high school have a presentation set up next year for all grades nine through twelve. Um, I forget which month. I'm guessing it's October. Um, but Mr. Hazler and I had a conversation about that today. So that's good. We'll have that covered.
Awesome. I think that's amazing. Um, I think that was, that was all I had. I don't think I missed anything. It was a great meeting. We're going to meet again in August. I think we discussed that we'd meet at the end of August before the school year starts. Just to go over a few more items. Um, I'm anticipating we'll have a meeting like every other month, just to kind of um, keep updated. But again, thank you, Mrs. Vansical for um, for listening to us, hearing us and always being so proactive. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to weigh in on a couple of the items too. I, I was not at the meeting. Um, I was, I had a personnel meeting and then I made a late phone call, which Mr. Blumentz said wasn't terribly late to reach out to our friend, Ms. Barbosa, which seven fifteen is pretty late, right? I mean, uh, that, that didn't, that didn't help my cause. Uh, but I'm really happy to hear about the, the wide range of things you covered. Quick update on the, the walking tour. Um, we're going to look at it as a, as a one-school pilot for this year with SJG, just the logistics of trying to coordinate with North Boulevard and with Hillview, with how few days, how many things there are going on at this time of year. Um, we're going to look to possibly do that in the, in the fall. We think it's better suited when things are a little bit more wide open, but I mean, it's twenty-four more days of school left, which is unbelievable to say out loud. Um, but yeah, so we, we've kind of pared down what we're looking to do there. And then I'm so happy uh, for you said uh, Miss Esposito about the AP bio as an opportunity for our seniors in the Allied Health Program. And that's something that's been a source of frustration and I will admit some dynamic tension for me with the high school is that our, some of our best science students in that Allied Health Program were not able to take AP bio and that's been, that's been fixed and I'm really excited about that. And then I'm just going to echo, I'm, I'm thrilled about the efforts being made to combat vaping. And I know Mr. Canisano from the town health office is really appreciative of how receptive the school district's been to his work. This is something he's very passionate about and he should be. This, this benefits kids and um, benefits families, brings greater education, something that the more you learn about it, the more terrifying you realize that that crisis really is. So just want to voice my support for that.
I'll add one more thing. Um, in our meeting today, um, we were talking about scheduling at the high school too. And um, there's more students scheduled for physics than Mr. Hazler has remembered in, I think he said ever. So um, I think that's a great. Huh? I am, I'm not sure how much ever, but but we're excited about that. That's really good. Yeah. Um, let me move on to the next one. Any questions? Awesome. Um, so the New Jersey graduation proficiency assessment. So we got the um, the very preliminary on-demand um, uh, scores basically that Pearson puts out. So we had a hundred and fifty-one students in grade eleven take both assessments. In ELA, ninety-five percent passed. Um, and in math, eighty-three percent passed in twenty twenty-four. That was seventy-seven percent. So we're excited about um, that growth in math. For those that didn't achieve proficiency, I wrote summer retake, but we do actually the fall retake here. So um, we'll just switch that. The students who did not pass will have the opportunity to retake the assessment in the fall. Um, the state has not updated what the twenty, the class of twenty twenty-six can do as alternate options. But um, the current pathway would be um, to use a different provision score from the PSAT, SAT, ACT, or Accuplacer. Um, a third pathway is the um, portfolio appeal. So we're waiting for guidance on what class of twenty twenty-six can do. So hopefully we'll get that in like the next month. Questions?
All right. Uh, moving on to FFA, we have four items, a new SDA grant, the North Boulevard Playground, renting of the turf fields to non-residents, and then an update on uh, the board office property and what options are being considered.
Okay, I'll take the first one, the uh, new SDA grant. Uh, the school board has an opportunity to collect or get reimbursement, I should say, of a hundred and one thousand dollars for a project that was done last summer, which was the remediation of asbestos out of Hillview. Now, the total uh, project was three hundred thousand, so we'll be able to get a refund or reimbursement of a hundred and one thousand, which will go back into the capital reserve fund for future use. Any questions?
When was that, when was this removal? Like, how long ago are we?
Last, last summer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe that was the old purpose for him, right?
Yeah.
And is it like a percentage? Like, is sports one oh one the number?
Uh, forty percent of whatever your total cost was. Total cost would have been two fifty-three, but we spent close to three hundred. So we're, we're definitely in there to get it.
Okay, thanks. Um, yeah, so the other, well, do you want to go right to four? Talk about four and then I'll just talk about my two items.
Mike, did you want to talk about four? What do you want me to talk?
You know, you, you guys look at me like I lack any flexibility whatsoever.
I was actually thinking Gordon, Gordon sent it to you, so.
You guys can throw the and I'll roll with it.
So my two, I'll talk to my two, I'll give you some time. So I know, I just wanted two items on the um, as a discussion item. I don't think, there's no real board um action to be taken, just thought it'd be good discussion. Number one, um, North Boulevard Playground, there was that incident um that we were notified about. And that kind of sparked a lot of community communication, primarily to me in certain places, just about the slides at that playground. I've heard that there, they, it was never an ideal playground situation. So just, I want to know, is that accurate? Is it something, are we, are we taking precautions so that the accident doesn't happen again? And that, yeah, I, I haven't seen it. I meant to go check. I have not been able to yet.
Yep. So, so what I'm showing you, and I, I should have uploaded this to um, to backup. I can actually pass this to you. It's on, it's on my cellular telephone. Uh, but I, I, Dr. Schlier sent me, that's an image of what one of the smaller students fell through. So you notice there's an opening so that kids can climb down. It's, it's like a graduated um, climb down. So what we've been doing, playground equipment really is designed for kids ages five through twelve. Um, and so we have, whenever the pre-K is out there, we always have an aid stationed there and that, that's a, as a safety measure um, to make sure that they can't possibly slip through. And, and it's interesting that we're working on getting a playground um, that's specifically for children who are in pre-K as well as for, in the uh, multiple disabilities program, or really for, for any, any sensory needs. Well, it's, it's really a playground for all, but I think that this, this helps to amplify the urgency for it. Um, I will say, I was, I was very proud of the student who fell. Apparently the reason he cried is because he wanted to go back and play, he wanted to go to the nurse. I, I, I admire that initiative, but we want to make sure that our, that our kids are safe. And so, yeah, when, when, when I saw that equipment, I was like, oh, now, now I get it. It's not just like there was a gap where they didn't finish something. And then as a good measure too, she also sent me the, the, there's actually a pretty cool looking slide and climbing thing. Um, also on my cellular telephone.
Your cellular phone.
Yes. Um, but that, that one's yeah, that one's forbidden. Um, the, the preschoolers are not allowed on that one because it's just too much of a hazard. So I can, I could add these pictures um, to, to backup after the fact too, but I should have added them in proactively. But yeah, so we're, we are working on that. So it's good. I can actually give you two answers though about the playground. So we, we are um, adding safety measures while the pre-K is out there. And also um, we're working on getting something, hopefully it won't, it won't be ready for the beginning of twenty-five, twenty-six, but hopefully we can get it in at some point that, during the next school year.
Great. That's very helpful and good to hear. Thank you.
Yep.
The second one, obviously, you know, we take a lot of pride in our grounds. I think we have a beautiful campus. Um, one of the most beautiful around and again, traveling for sports, you see even more mass fluent areas that don't even have what we have. It's, it's fantastic. Um, a lot of reports about, you know, we do rent our turf fields to non-residents, which is normally fine and dandy. Um, a parent slash master board member has, you know, notified me about a lot of
Issues.
issues, trash being left there. Um, just obviously not respecting our grounds. So if you'd like to, I, I, I could pass them to Mr. Sarisi to give some more content, text on it. But obviously, what can we do? What have we been doing to just make sure that if somebody is renting it, they are held to the obligation of them respecting the grounds?
I guess in the end, um, Gordon, ultimately my question will be, is, is it worth that we do this? And I don't expect an answer today. Uh, I've kind of asked this question in the past and I know we, we recently revoked it. We recently voted for the, the fees uh, to be renewed and stuff. But I guess my question is, is it worth the wear and tear on the turf fields that you know, they only have a certain life and now we're adding eight hours on a Saturday and eight hours on a Sunday that these, these fields are being used. Um, unfortunately, you know, I, I grew up in um, shall we say, an Italian family who's looking at everything all the time and very nosy. Okay? And so when I walk past or drive past or walk my dog, I mean, you know, when you walk your, your dog past the high school, it, it takes a little bit of time. And so you notice a lot of different things. And there's, there's garbage on the fields. Um, there's people that are, you know, hanging on the fences. There are numerous dogs on the fields, which really upsets me because if the signs were any bigger. You know, but people just, and there's people in this town that walk on the fields with their dogs. And then I get to hear from the athletes that there's dog stuff on the field. So like, you know, it's a turf field and kids are stepping in it with their cleats. Um, and in my opinion, we're, we're taking away and I, I don't, you know, I don't, I want to do a poll or find out how many, but if we're taking the fields away for our student athletes in our own town on Saturdays and Sundays, they can't go out there and, and do what they want to do, or the, the kids can't go out and play flag football or whatever because we're renting out the fields. Um, and I guess ultimately just my question is, is, is it worth the extra money that we're getting from this? Are we really getting the money or is the town getting the money? Um, and uh, on top of that, I, I think um, I had brought up about the no entrance signs outside the Kellett gym. And uh, on Saturday, I walked my dog. So from the time I went to the tennis courts, down to the Boulevard and back to the tennis courts, I saw four different cars pull in the, and the exit. Uh, and me being who I am, uh, with the attitude, I went over and told the guy with the truck from Delaware that I know you're probably not here all the time, but you can't be pulling in this parking lot this way because there was a car coming out at the same time. And again, uh, you know, it, it's, if maybe if
Really went to the issue.
If we don't rent out the fields, we might have less people who don't know how to enter the parking lot. Um, I guess is my thing. Thank you, Joe. That was, that was helpful.
I, I know how to manage it.
Yeah. So again, I, I just saying, is it worth it? In the end, how much are we really making to make this maybe go away? I mean, are we paying extra for everybody to go pick up, you know, for the custodians? Is it extra work for them? What else? That, that's really where I'm going with it. And I don't expect the answers today.
No, no, I don't give you an answer tonight.
You didn't stop talking. Now you can answer.
Yeah. I don't, I don't have an answer for you today. We can look into actually which group is leaving the most garbage behind. Hopefully it's just one, maybe two groups and maybe we stop them from coming. Or we charge them an extra fee for a custodian to go out there and clean up, you know, the field. Or we charge them an extra fee for a custodian to go out there and clean up, you know, the field after they're gone. We could also do a penalty system where, all right, you get three strikes. First time it's 100 bucks, second time it's 200, third time it's 300, and you're not coming back, something like that. I mean, there, there's many different ways to do it, but I think we need to discuss a little more before we just, you know, try to make a decision on that.
Yeah, no, I, that's, that's cool. I, the other thing I, I've heard is that we're not even allowed to tell people that the dogs aren't, because somebody might have a, a, what do you call it, a ser, service animal or something like that? Or, so we're not even allowed to ask them? Listen, no dogs allowed, like, take your dog.
That's not true, that's not true.
That's not true.
That's not true.
I thank you for saying that, because that's what I've been told. So, I mean, I'm going to continue to tell people to get their dog off the field. But it's, you know, maybe we should just stop doing it, is my point.
Well, so it's, it's a function of our policy. So if we want to change that policy and, and implement the things that Gordon was just talking about as far as penalties and things like that, one, two, three strikes, that's something that we could certainly do.
Yeah, something that Gordon had to discuss earlier today was that graduated punishment system. But you could even have it almost like when, when you rent out a property, somebody has put down a security deposit. Because it's very, it's, it's hard to get penalty money back from people, but if you already have it, you can determine how much you're going to give back. I, I spoke with somebody who's friendly with a guy who runs a bunch of baseball centers, and he actually charges by the water bottle that's picked up, which is, yeah, it's, it's pretty precise. And it, it sends a message back, and you can tell people like, look, you take a panoramic of, of what this place looks like when, when you're getting here, and it better look that good, if not better, when you're leaving it. So we, we, we can look at the amount of revenue that's brought in. Like, I, I do like to see the fields getting used, whether it's through some type of formal V competition, or if it is kids playing flag football, or whatever it might be. But, but, but we'll look at the value added from whatever revenue we're generating. And, and I, I thoroughly like the idea of making it, making a very strong argument against leaving garbage behind. We have issues with kids riding their bikes on the field.
Yeah, we're never gonna stop.
Right, right, no, I, I get that.
Of our kids hanging on the fences, our lacrosse goals were getting destroyed. Those kids thought it was fun, they tried to shit upside, so, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, there was, there was a kid the other day throwing, he was playing war ball with one of the sheds.
I think that's going to be the hardest thing. The hardest thing is going to be proving who did it.
Well, that's why I'm saying, just, let's just end it.
So, right, but end it, then we're, then we're turning away money that we could get. And I, I, I guess the question is like, how prevalent is it? Is it people that live in town just leaving a water bottle behind, or walking their dog? Or is it the people that are, you know, renting the field that are causing the problem? Or is it just one bad apple, you know, spoiling the whole thing? So I mean, I think we just got to look into who's doing it, but then how do you actually monitor it as well? Like, does someone go to the field and inspect it before they rent it to make sure it wasn't like kids that were there on like Friday after school, just playing around, and it wasn't them? And like, how do you even, how do you govern this, would be the question, right? And then we don't have that money.
I think, I think, I think Mr. Senex is right. It's, it's very hard to make a blanket statement that we have to, we can't rent it out to outside of town, you know, for non-residents anymore, you know, just frame of reference. You know, my morning route on a, on a Monday for running, I always do a couple laps on the track at, at the high school. And I know on Sundays, there, the men's soccer is pretty much there all day. Today, there was one water bottle left on the field, it was on the bench, it was actually a nice thermos water bottle that somebody's probably missing today. It wasn't just garbage. But there are other, other Mondays when I run on that track, and there's 20 water bottles. So it's, it's, it's hit or miss. Maybe if it is, you know, you take a picture of the field in the morning, and then first thing on my, you know, on Sunday morning, and then on Monday morning, if you show up, the, you know, the grounds crew shows up in the, in the morning, it's like, wow, there's shirts and garbage and paper and bottles all over the place. We send a picture and say, you guys left this. This is your security deposit for the day gone. But I think it's hard to make, you know, generalization that you just can't rent to non-residents. Because many times I do go by the field, it's sometimes, hate to say it, our, our own kids jumping on the, the track, high jump pit and riding their bikes on the track, on the track high jump pit. So we just can't say it's non-residents.
I do have a question for Jackie. If someone's dog is on the field and there are our, our signs up there, and something happens with that dog, are we liable?
Yes.
Fantastic, okay, thanks.
So I, I think a good plan of action would be, maybe the, we should look at the policy and see if there's something that we want to add to it. Maybe it doesn't have the right kind of teeth, or, you know, it doesn't have any kind of violation clause or something like that, that we should look to make sure that that's in place, so at least there is something to actually enforce, you know? I think that'd be a good first step to kind of taking what you're saying, Sam, and putting it into some real action.
And now for something completely different. So the, the last item is about the Seven Industrial Road property and other options. Mr. Gibbs and I were talking about this one at, at length earlier today too. As you know, we've been talking about what's going to be our next home for board office. We have the post office property through February of 2026, and then we need to find another home. I was very enthusiastic about Seven Industrial Road. Unfortunately, some information that I'll say was a typo or an accounting oversight altered my perspective on what potential revenue could be from that building. And that, it loses to me considerable value a, as a possible landing place in the absence of the consistent stream of revenue that I thought was going to be in that 100 to 120 ballpark. We are looking at other options. I was joking with him today, we're looking at Plan C and Plan D. It's been approved that we can get an appraisal for the New York Public Turf Bike Property. I appreciate the board's support on that. We'll have somebody going out this week, give us an appraisal. That'll determine how much we can actually bid, or, yeah, bid, I guess, for, for the, for the property. But I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Gibbs, but I, I just wanted you to know this is something that we're very actively working on. When I'm down in Atlantic City for my conference, I am actually going to be meeting with representative from our architect's firm, also to talk about my expectations for what we can get out of a few different property options, and just share my, my thoughts about the process for Seven Industrial Road as well. Because we know, I know the board wasn't universally thrilled with how some of the news was shared, or the, it's the timeline. So, well, all of that conversation, but I don't know if you want to add anything there, Gordon?
Yeah, actually, I did reach out to the state as to what's involved in getting a property or purchasing a property. As long as there's no children in the building as far as classrooms. It's just a matter of basically filling out a form and updating our long-range facility plan. So that, that's, that's an easy thing to do. As far as, I mean, Seven Industrial, obviously it was very disappointing that we could not put in a preschool. That was, that was a real letdown. And unfortunately, we didn't get that information until much later. Now, the new building we're looking at now is a much older building, needs a lot of work, but it's considerably less in price. We don't have the appraisal yet, so we don't have the actual cost of it, but it's probably about 25% less than what we're looking at right now with Seven Industrial. So it's a possibility. Any questions?
So with this new building, we wouldn't be generating any revenue with that lead to any issues? Because I know how you mentioned how we're losing the revenue we're generating from the post office. We were gaining that with Seven Industrial, now that we won't be getting that, is that going to be any issue in the future, do you see?
And that, that's a great question, because that was something I was really enthusiastic about, because I just stumbled across the word enthusiastic. See, that's how excited I was. But school districts generally don't generate revenue. So the fact that we could be doing so, I was really, I was excited. Because we, we've had that 55,000 over the last five years coming in for the post office. Prior to that, it was 50, prior to that, it was 40, and, and so forth. But what we're doing more aggressively now is seeking out savings. Because if we can't bring that additional money in, we're going to now find ways to make sure it's not going out. And what I'm discovering with this shared services group that, that more or less just kind of grew somewhat organically in our little corner of Morris County, is that there are opportunities for savings. It's a lot of work, but it's, it's really good work. And so if, if we, if we can get the Chapel Hill Route consolidated with Pompton Lakes and another, another district, that could be the 55,000 that we're not getting from the post office, it would be saved. Or, actually, we would be generating revenue there, so that wouldn't be a savings, it would be revenue. Because the, the agreement that we have with the other districts is, if we're paying $70,000 for a run, and your district can pick it up, we'll, we'll pocket 35 in savings and pay you 35 to do the run. So the fact that we're able to pick up a run for somebody means we're going to get half of what they're spending, which I think is, is a great win-win situation. So to your point, Tim, it's a really good one. This, this one would have zero revenue generating opportunities to it. But it would be at a considerably less purchase cost.
So does that mean, is Seven Industrial kind of off the table, is that how it looks?
Not, not completely, but it's been. The sheen is off the, is off that one. Yeah, I said the blooms off the rose. So it, it is a possibility, it's just it's not nearly as attractive as a couple other things that we're a little bit more enthusiastic about.
That's your question. Do we make interest on the money that we have in capital reserve?
Yes, we do.
All right, so if we were going to pay X for Seven Industrial and spend more of the capital reserve money, and now we're going to spend less of that money potentially, the difference between what we were going to spend and what we're going to spend now, that difference would be put in our account, and we would gain interest on it?
It would stay in the account, and yes, it would gain interest.
And we got a large amount of money from the state last year, I think 1.7 million, which we didn't have. So essentially, if we're not spending that 1.7 million dollars, or just a small piece of it, that additional plus money, we would be gaining interest on it. And that might also offset the loss of revenue from the post office.
Well, unfortunately, you can't take that revenue out of capital reserve. It has to be for a capital reserve project, so it can't be used for general operating expenses.
Understood, but either way, it's still money that's coming into the coffers that we could use for something that we don't have to go find somewhere.
Exactly, yep.
Definitely better than nothing.
Absolutely, yep.
Do we have a final number of what the revenue is from Industrial Road, or we're not sure? Because I know there was an update, correct?
Yeah, where, where I was anticipating, we're looking at 100 to 120. I think we would have been looking at something closer to like 10 to 20. And to me, there's, there's, that's a very thin, razor-thin margin of error. So like, if one tenant leaves, you know, it's not that we would be operating in the red, but it, to me, it's just, it's not worth. The benefit doesn't outweigh the cost.
Sorry, that was 10 to 20,000?
Yep. That, that 10 to 20,000 was before renting out the space, you know, the additional space on the second floor. There's still potential, but, you know, it's the board's decision, obviously, but it is, does have potential, yeah. Any other questions? No, thank you.
All right, moving on to policy, two items, the AI policy, and then the timeline for ongoing revisions, two policy items.
Sorry, can't multitask. I, I'll, I'll take care of the, I can do both the policy items. I spoke briefly to Mr. McSweeney about these, but the AI policy, we're, we're right on schedule with what we wanted to do. If you recall, this was part of a Strauss, a major bulk update that Strauss provided back in December that, that I started to break down for you in January. We went through the approval process starting in March. But we said it wasn't really worthwhile to approve the AI policy until we had an AI plan. So Mr. Shea and the committee are confident, based on their work this year, that we will have an AI plan in place by mid-July, which coincides brilliantly for when we will do our first policy reading for the AI policy. It'll go through its second policy reading in August, which means it'll be ready for implementation for the start of the 25, 26 school year.
So I had one comment on the policy that was in backup, the AI policy as it stands now. I'm not going to go through my comments now, but I guess I'll send them to Mr. McSweeney, and then we could put them into a future discussion.
Great, if you want to, if you want to throw anything out there too, because that was, that was work that was actually done with the AI committee too. So it's got that group's fingerprints all over it.
So the green that's in there, all of the input from the committee, no issue with that? It's more like the last paragraph, as far as your ability to like, just change the policy for us, for any amount of period of time before you come back to us to get approval? I think we just got to word that a little bit better.
Yeah, and, and that is, that is one thing that I can imagine for the board, it can be unnerving is too strong. But the fact that so much of the policy is predicated on the plan, and the plan is a living document, it consolidates a lot of power into me. And I mean, I'm not going to go all Machiavellian on you guys, but, but it, it is important that those checks and balances are in place. And anything that is a major revision to the AI plan has to be presented to the board. And, and failure to do so, that, that comes down on me. You know, so Matt Shea is the delegate for it, he will be responsible for generating a significant portion of the content. He'll run it through me, I'll run it through you, and there'll be a pretty consistent pipeline there.
And I think, Dr. Porcy, did you mention that Mr. Shea is going to give a presentation in, in June? A full presentation of the, the plan and policy to June to the board.
Yeah, that, I can't believe I didn't mention that, that's, yeah. So at the June 9th meeting, Matt will do a presentation on exactly what Greg was just talking about. I think this would be fantastic, coming straight from him. You guys can ask him questions, he's super knowledgeable, and he's very enthusiastic. There's that word again, about, about really this whole measure. And he's really, through this process, he's really become a state leader in, in AI and education. I'm really, I'm really proud of him for that, I'm also impressed with his work. That was an intentional dramatic pause while I was writing something down. And the, the other thing is, we, we have a, a living document that's been shared with you. It's titled simply enough, Policies to Address. So something I was talking about with Mr. McSweeney is that we're, we're, we're going to focus on which policies are most timely to be implemented or revised in time for the 25, 26 school year. Like, having a field trip policy that's revised for the school year, that's a good one to have ready for a July 1st reading. Grading system as well, but there, there are others that aren't necessarily quite as, bless you, quite as urgent. That's a lot of blesses. The, the class rank one, though it is important, isn't, isn't something that's time sensitive, so that one can wait, because that's more or less a language revision. But I just wanted to make you aware that we're going to prioritize which policies require the most urgent emphasis to ensure that they're ready to go for September 4th, 2025. By the way, we have a board meeting the night before then. One times. That's, that's my story, I'm sticking to it.
All right, anything else on policy? Okay, that brings us to our next opportunity for public comment. This time, the public can speak on any topic they wish, if there's anyone here, but there isn't. So we're going to move on to unfinished business. Any board member have any unfinished business? How about new business? How about board member announcements?
I have a few. I attended the county, the NJ SBA, or I'm sorry, Morris County Hybrid Spring Celebration, which was lovely. It was really nice to see the unsung heroes, receive their prizes or their, their certificates, so that was very nice. I also attended the NJ SBA May Delegate Session, which was awesome. The new board was elected, so that was fantastic. I also attended the PV Choir Concert, which was my last PV Choir Concert, so that was a little sad. But it was amazing, as always. Mrs. Benitez and the students do a fantastic job. She had all sixth, seventh, and eighth graders perform one song at the end, which was tremendous. We even had kids standing back here on the floor, it was awesome. They did a nice job. I give her a lot of credit, that is a lot of students to get to participate, and a lot of pre-teen boys. So they looked fantastic, and they're all black, and they're pop of color. So a lot of credit to her, she's amazing and a great. Um, so a lot of credit to her. She's, uh, amazing and a great, great addition to our district. Um, and I think that was it. I'll go.
I just wanted to say one thing. I actually had this for last meeting, but we went super, super late last time. So I didn't want to tack anything on, but I just wanted to say that a couple of weeks ago, um, CPAC invited Matt Shea, more Matt Shea, uh, commentary here. Um, they invited Matt Shea to attend a meeting because I think they really wanted to meet with him, but then we wanted to refine the focus. So, um, he prepared a session on assistive technology. Uh, Ms. Bronco and Mr. Foglio also attended. We had a huge turnout of parents in the meeting, which was fantastic. Uh, but Matt didn't just speak to, um, you know, assistive technology, um, with special education students. He also talked about just everyday assistive tech that, you know, general ed students are using as well. Um, got to show us a lot of stuff. There was a lot of back and forth Q and A. So, um, CPAC was really grateful to have him there. Um, and he did a fantastic job as well as Ms. Bronco and Mr. Foglio. Um, and the group was really grateful to have them. So thank you for that.
And I, I'll weigh in on the Matt Shea Love Fest, which is certainly, certainly well earned. But so, something that, that came up, i- i- it's true though, as we were going through the network administrator interviews. Um, and I think Matt really embodies it is the focus of his work is not technology. The focus of his work is people and their relationship with technology. And, and, and it really shows when, when you take a people-first approach, um, things fall into place really well. Now I'm going to conclude the Matt Shea Love Fest. It is now over.
All right. I got two. Uh, we kind of hit them ready, but on 4:30, I attended the MCC EA Friend of Education Celebration. I attend this every year and this year again, it was emceed by our very own Anne Marie Finin. She does a great job. Uh, it was a great event. And then on 5:07, as Dr. Portis said, a bunch of us attended the Morris County SBA meeting where Sean Moore was honored again for being an unsung hero. So he was honored at a prior meeting for being an unsung hero. But then out of those unsung heroes, he was honored again for being like the tippity top of the unsung heroes. For the high school students, I think they picked nine out of the like 20. And he was in that group of nine to get a scholarship. So really good job to, uh, Sean Moore. And then also as, as we had said already, uh, Mr. Cerise and Dr. Portis were honored with certifications. Um, so congratulations to both of you. All right. Uh, we do have reason to go into executive session. We do have reason to go into executive session. We will discuss acquisition of property. No action will be taken. We will adjourn from there. Our next meeting is 5:27 here at the high school. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Good night, everyone.